Please stand for the pledge.
Please stand for the pledge.
I believe.
But. Why? He's on the stage opener. As you. Come back. So. You look at the fire. State right. See it's temple.
Line item four, approval of agenda. Commissioner Trillo, you wanted to make one adjustment.
Commissioners, I'd just like us to be able to reserve three minutes for Santiago Travis. He's the new North Central Director. He's just running a few minutes behind, but at some point when there's a break in the agenda. Between line items, I'd like us to give him an opportunity just to say hello and introduce himself to the board.
Okay. Commissioner Kern.
Uh, no changes, no issues. Move to approve is. David. Doctor.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item five, approve regular meeting minutes from last meeting. Any discussion or changes?
I don't not have any.
Seeing none, motion to approve.
So moved.
Take it.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Trillo.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item six. I have visitor. On line one, we have Daniel Ivy Soto, Mike Provine. Justin Menhart and Rodney Reed.
De Martinez, IT.
Soraya Martinez, the wild divide.
Patricia Duran, the loud tonight.
Jeffrey Gilmer, Angel Fire Airport.
Rayetta Tri- Trillo, Chief Deputy Clerk.
Leonard Baca County Sheriff.
Ralph. Eth Colfax Gazette.
Heidi Frisco, Road Department.
Wesley Thompson with V M D C.
Warden Regina Slade, Bee Hill Maldonado Detention Center.
Thank you all for attending today. Public comments, line item seven, all comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing none, we will move on. Line item eight, discussion, financial report and grant report. Justin, I presume.
Yes, sir, that's me requesting to share screen. I have various reports that I will be sharing with you. First, I just have a quick dashboard. Just give you the highlights of some of the things that we're working on right now. First, first on my agenda to talk about is the F Y twenty four audit. As of the end of last month, the county is not pending any items to provide to the auditor. They are still working on drafting the financial statements and we have been following up with them on a weekly basis. And hopefully they will be done with that very soon. For the F Y twenty five audit, we are working with the new auditor. They've, you know, made their request list of approximately a hundred items. The county's provided a really substantial portion of those items already. I'd say probably two thirds of the list has been fulfilled at this point and we're working on on the remainder of that list. Just a quick note on the F Y twenty five audit deadline. At the state level, the state auditor's office has extended the deadlines for for all entities that have to undergo a single audit. For which I believe the county likely will have a single audit, although it's possible that they will not. Just next on the list here, talking about budget, we'll go over the budget report here in a second, but. I did not see any significant overages at the department level or the fund level. The county manager is working on. You know, per the commission's comments during the last meeting, she's looking at shoring up controls at the line item level. And also working on P cards is one area that. She's looking to improve controls by requiring purchase orders. That's still in progress as of right now, but at some point going forward, P O's will be required in order to have expenditures. Because right now, some of those cards are being used and then we're having to go back at at the finance level and reallocating costs. To departments and I think that's causing certain line item overages, so this will help prevent that. Grants, we did submit a pretty large expenditure for the event center. Recently, that's still waiting D F A approval. All grant reporting has been submitted timely and we have some grant reconciliations, some which I'll. I'll show you that we've been working on kind of improving our grant reconciliation controls. All D F A report, there's one that's to be submitted here in the next few days. It's ready to be submitted as of right now. Right. I will jump into some of the reports that we have here. I'll start with the treasurer's report. I just have a kind of a filter tab. This is as of yesterday. You can see at a high level that receipts have outpaced dispersments. However, I'll note that that's primarily due to two point seven million dollars was received in advance for transportation grants. At the beginning of the year, so if that were to be stripped out. It would be lagging behind, but that's normal at this time of the year because property taxes are about to be coming in here in the next couple of months. Right. Quickly, I'll show you also the investment report here. Total twenty three point five million, sixteen of which is in the money market account in bank. And the remainder in various CDs. Budget report, I haven't filtered right now to just see the department totals. This is just about four months through the twelve month year, so about a third is expected to be spent. So any. Budget percentages remaining here that are below sixty six, sixty seven percent would be those I would draw attention to. And I don't see any that are of really significant concern. You know, that some of these are appropriations and therefore wouldn't track normally throughout the year. So, you know, at a high level, I'd say that I don't have any really significant concerns about budget here in the in the general fund. Or really any of the other funds. I'll scroll through quickly here. If I note anything, I'll draw attention to it, but. Everything looks fairly normal. Debt service will be occurring here in next month. For all the fire intercept payments. And now I'll share, it's kind of a grant tracker that we have of various tabs for various types of grants. This is legislative appropriations. There's been some activity. On reimbursements for the road department, construction for the sheriff's office vehicles and also for the event center. There are some various payment requests that have been made on those grants. The event center, last that we spoke to. Them on that substantial completion is expected in the in the next month on that project. For N M D L T grants, moving to the next tab here. You can see there there are quite a few projects that are ongoing. I did mention. Actually, it's two point, two point three million that was received for these various N M D L T projects that was received in July. I'd say most of these projects at the top here, other than, you know, maybe Gloucester Gap and Barlet Mesa are very, very early stages. Now, there were environmental studies that were done for, I believe, Gloucester Gap here at the beginning of the year. And that's where these expenditures are coming from. But I think, you know, going forward, a lot of these projects will have to be pushed. They have a deadline of end of next year, so. Most of them do. Fire grants, I'm honestly, I'm still in progress on getting current statuses on some of these. I had Mr. Sandoval reach out to various departments to try to get them the most current information on some of these. You can see there has been activity on the Farley. That stuff, fill station for fire suppression, water supply. There were significant expenditures on that project, really. The entire grant amount almost was spent. Also rapid response had a four hundred twenty six thousand dollars spent on their fire apparatus. And I know that there was one other one, Vermejo Park. That, here's a comment here actually from Jacob Martinez. They're looking at taking a B F. B F D loan out on their remainder needed. I believe the estimate was around over half a million dollars on that. So the the difference will be potentially funded by by the fire intercept debt agreement with N M F A. Last tab here is for airport grants. I don't have really much of an update on on these grants. The raise grants. The praise grant for rural air service. You can see there's been payment requests made on that grant here recently. And a couple of payment requests related to the aircraft hangar construction and also airfield lightning rehab project. I believe that's all I have, so I will stand for any questions at this time. If anyone wants to ask me really on any of the areas that I just updated.
Commissioners. Questions?
No questions. Thank you, Justin.
I do. Justin.
Sure. Yes, Commissioner.
Um. Are we all wrapped up with the tiger grant now?
Would you say?
Yes, sir, the. The close date on that was September thirtieth. So theoretically, we did have not gotten a closeout letter yet. So until we get that closeout letter, it's not official. The federal government has shut down right now, so I wouldn't expect it in the in the next few days. One caveat I'll add is until the F Y twenty four audit is is done, I am not sure that they will close it out until until that is done.
Okay. Then on our C D that we had a tiger grant C D, I don't know on your spreadsheet if that has an expiration date.
Yeah, let me see if the maturity date was listed there.
Because I think it was a three month C D at that time, and I think we.
Yeah, the maturity is listed as October nineteenth. That investment report was dated September thirtieth, so it's it's just a little stale. I don't I don't know what happened at the, if it was reinvested or not on that date. You'd have to ask the the treasurer on that one.
All right. Mister Treasurer and County Manager, would you have him follow up with us on that? And then my question is on the drawdowns of the grants, are we drawing down on on those grants that are active at least quarterly? To show activity on them?
We've been actively working on grant reimbursements for the last several weeks, I would say. There there may be some that are needing to be reimbursed and that's kind of what we've been working on is trying to identify those.
Okay. Alrighty, that's. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
I will I will have some more questions, Justin, if you don't mind staying on for our next line item though.
Yes, sir.
Line item nine, discussion, action, resolution number twenty twenty five dash nine oh, budget adjustments.
Okay, that is also me, I'm gonna share my screen. Starting from the from the top here, we have a budget adjustment for the Clerks Bureau of Elections. They were reimbursed by the state, the Secretary of State on some malice and reimbursement line items. So this revenue and expenditures are equal to each other, it balances out. The next line here is for Colfax County Airport Operations. This was necessary due to the Village of Angel Fire requesting reimbursement for some credit card sales. So there's an increase in expenditures of just under six thousand dollars on that line. Next on the list here, and this is the only expenditure increase that's being requested, so. Be open with that fact, that's because it relates to prior fiscal year expenditures. In and these two line items for professional services and I T services. So there will need to be adequate budget for the current year invoices near near the end of this year. So we are requesting increases of one thousand three hundred fifty six and eight thousand three hundred and forty three dollars for the detention center. Next line, fire protection, county fire marshal fund. This is just a reclass of expenditures of eleven thousand between maintenance for vehicles and supplies. Next line is another maintenance request to reclass in the manager's office between supplies. Our increasing supplies and decreasing train training postage and vehicle for two thousand, two thousand and one thousand respectively. To offset that. And I will mention that this goes back towards my earlier comment about P cards. Some charges were made to to P cards that affected the manager's office. Line item, some of which is being researched to see if that can be journal entry and reallocated to other departments. That incurred those expenditures. In the last line here is another reclass entry for the D W I fund to move between professional services and contracted employee. And that's that's it, so I will stand for any questions.
Commissioners.
No, no questions, he explained.
Sorry. So, Justin, on the, I have two question or one really, the Mulhill, the Hill Maldonado Detention Center.
Yes.
Was that within their budget still at the end of this last year? Do they have funds remaining that would have been swept into general fund for that?
If you give me about fifteen seconds, I actually have last year's budget report open, I can probably give you a quick answer on that.
Okay. My commissioners, my concern is this, we're pulling out a general fund with that. I understand that it was done last year and as long as there was adequate funds within those line items, I don't really have an issue. My other issue is with the fire protection fund there. That this is to clean up that line item of that wet negative that should have never went negative in the first place.
Okay, so I do have an answer for you. These are the two lines, there was remaining budget last year of just under eleven thousand dollars, which is approximately what's being requested. And I'm sorry, I missed your your second comment, can you please repeat that?
It's the fire protection fund. I know that was, that was this fiscal year though, correct? Not prior?
Yes, this is just requesting a reclassification, so it offsets between the increase in expense and the decrease.
And that's to clean up the negative line item balance on that?
I I believe so.
So, I'm fine with that, I don't really, I don't agree with the fire marshal one there. I just. We need to be on top of our stuff and if we're not, then it is what it is.
Yes, I think there is a concerted effort to to try to maintain the department level budgets currently, especially since the the comments made during the last meeting.
So just a brief explanation on what happened there. That was done at the very beginning of this fiscal year. They had us entered with a interim budget where I did have the funds in there to cover it. Then after we did the purchase order and stuff, moved forward with the having everything completed for that project. The regular budget came out and I did not have enough funds at that point. So I do own part of that as I should have caught that when they dropped to the regular budget and requested the bar move a lot sooner than before we actually made the payments. But that's, that's what happened there.
And I guess with supplies, are you gonna have sufficient enough funds to take the eleven thousand decrease from supplies?
I do, I do, I have a little over sixty thousand in supplies, so that'll just make that adjustment so that we can cover that. Just, I mean, all that does is just clean it up to make it, make everything line up. Everything is all one fund for the fire department. But just to put it in the proper line item, so everything lines up, looks cleaner that way. Like I said, I do own that part by not catching when they drop to the regular budget, not the interim budget to make those requests.
Okay. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item ten, discussion, action, indigenous care claim, report for October.
Good morning, County Manager and Commissioners. I do have uh one claim for. An unclaimed person. Uh everybody, this person does meet all the requirements set forth in policy.
Questions, comments?
No questions.
Nope. Seeing none, motion?
Move to approve.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Line item eleven, discussion, action, Angel Fire Airport, jet A fuel truck replacement.
Good morning, Chairman Tame and Commissioners. Excuse me. And Manager Navarette. It's a pleasure to come sit and talk to you a little bit this morning about this issue. I'll bring this up. I know that I have sent out a an email uh kind of outlining a little bit for for the public and it's going on. Uh they know what's happening here. Angel Fire Airport, as you know, is one of the main economic drivers for our Little Valley. Uh up in Moreno, uh it brings a lot of folks in. It's part of the the whole tourism uh cycle that happens up there. We currently have a nineteen ninety three Ford fuel truck that is uh dead in the water at the beginning of July of this year. Um that truck went down and went out of service and was down for almost five weeks. Uh before we could find somebody that was willing to to work on it. In that time, our busiest time of the year, we estimated we we lost between twelve and fourteen thousand dollars in fuel sales. The Jet A, which is for the jets and the turboprop airplanes, is literally the number one revenue source for the airport. Over fifty percent of our annual revenue comes out of that truck and out of the fuel tank. Uh we got the truck back running, and lo and behold, at the beginning of this month, it died again. And she's sitting there uh dead. Thank goodness, at this point, we're doing some work at the airport. You're aware, we're doing an airport lighting project. So we're only open on the weekends, but for the most part, we're unable to sell fuel again out of that truck, so uh another major loss. So I'm coming before you uh this morning, just I need your help. We desperately need uh to get a new truck. Um I can give you details on the homework that we've done. Uh there are trucks available, a particular company, and unfortunately, it's in Florida, and it. Might take a while to get here. Uh but uh I think you're all aware of the impact. Uh that this makes overall for our revenue for both the Village of Angel Fire and for the county that we take in. We're turning folks away. They're. They're having to go to Taos primarily, or some of them are even in Santa Fe. Uh we can't service their aircraft, so uh they're going elsewhere elsewhere, so um. I'm open to questions on what this looks like, but uh I have in my hand a resolution that's going before. The the village council tonight. This is a resolution uh to fund. Uh half the price of the truck, a commitment by uh the mayor who supports this fully. And the village manager who supports it fully, you know, we believe the council will approve this tonight. So on your part, uh if there's a path of funding, which we believe there may be. My, what I implore is that you would consider that and move that forward uh as quickly as we could. Uh timeline on the truck, um the vendor says that these are brand new truck. And uh five days to prep it, and then it has to be put on a truck and shipped from Florida, so we. If possible, we could have an operating fuel truck before the holidays start uh in Thanksgiving and Christmas. So that is my my speech to you all, and I'll take any questions um. That you would like to to ask.
Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Um no question that this is a huge economic driver for the valley as as well as the county. Um I would suggest we approach New Mexico DOT. For the funds. That would be the my first my first choice. Um they've been very cooperative and helpful, and uh they're also very aware of. The importance of that facility, so.
Like the Commissioner, I I absolutely agree with you um. Based on the relationship we have right now with the county still in technically. Uh in ownership of the airport or sponsorship of the airport, uh those channels are not open for me personally. And they their airports, so that's something I'd be glad to support, do all that I can to help, but it that will have to start here. Uh in in Raton to get that moving forward.
Yeah, possibly. I don't know, maybe the county manager can reach out to um the New Mexico DOT in cooperation with you and maybe set up a meeting between the two. Um to try to solicit the funding for this.
Okay, absolutely, willing and able.
I think uh. If we if we strike out there, I mean. Going to the legislature is gonna take too long. We need to, we need to be on this sooner, and then if if not, um then I think counting needs to look at alternatives. And I'll reserve my ideas on that to find out from New Mexico DOT.
Yeah, several years ago, eh there was an initiative to get a truck for the standard hundred low lead, you know, for this piston driven. Smaller aircraft um to to push that through grant processes and get the truck in hand took almost three years. So uh that's the imperative of whatever way we can move this forward, so. Uh you hopefully won't take that long. We are trying to get this other truck fixed and running. But once again, we saw we got it running in less than six weeks. It was dead. Again, it's. It's had a very useful life, you know, thirty three, thirty two years is uh is pretty good service out of a vehicle, so. Anything else?
Mission.
Yes, um I definitely understand the economic driver of this for the valley. I'm in favor of of supporting this. Uh first, I would say, we ask NMDOT, but I know from some of our other projects. Up there that they have, they haven't had the money to assist with with other with other stuff. My other thought would possibly, uh. I know we have the LATCF fund uh and Justin and and county manager. I'm not sure how it would fit in there, but it does. It does, the money could be used for economic development, and if this would fit within that. I mean, and the village is willing to split the cost, I'd be willing to. To support a up to one hundred and fifty thousand to or half match with that, and then. My thought behind that is for my commissioners is, yes, the process is still going. Uh it's taking some time, but. And I don't mean this to sound bad, but if it doesn't go through, we end up back with the airport. I want to have a working fuel truck. We need a working fuel truck. And uh. Angel Fire will split half the cost essentially, so.
And ca- Commissioner Trujillo, the that is the uh third point within the um resolution that will be put before. The Angel Fire Board tonight is to uh pay fifty percent of those expenses, and again, that has the support of. All those that I've talked to so far, uh but again, it's it's not, it hasn't been signed, sealed, and delivered yet at this point. Um but certainly, that's what we're we're aiming to do. Yeah, and and may I say, uh Commissioners, um I know that we haven't had an update on the status of the sponsorship change. And I know that's not on the agenda today, but I put forward to you all that at any point in time, uh you would like me to speak to that. Where we're at with that process, I'll be glad to do that, and maybe we could set a regular agenda, meeting time. Uh you know, periodically to give you the update. I will tell you, things are going very well. Uh right now, our biggest problem is the shutdown with the FAA to get some of the stuff, you know, pushed forward, um so.
Thank you, uh. The way this is listed on the agenda. So did it just fa- fail weights and measures, and I'm going from that to your email? Or is the whole truck dead in the water?
Yes, sir. What's right, the truck, the engine will not run, which means you can't even release the brakes to push the. Truck over to the main field tanks to to uh uh empty it, and uh you have to have the engine running to for the pumps to work, and so she's just sitting there in a field. Uh like I said, I've been trying, I've got a mechanic that's gonna try to look at it. Sadly, we, the person who repaired it, won't even return our calls. And the two other mechanics who have showed up to look at it never put in any sort of paperwork to uh wanna fix it. So you're looking at the mechanic right now. I try to get the uh part in there that I believe will get it running again, but. How long it'll last, I'm not sure.
Uh just when I read this, it looked like it was due to the failure of weights and measures and then.
Yeah.
Your email followed up, so.
Yes, sir, and and to that fact, um it did fail. Um and even if we get a new truck, we still have to have the state come up and 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 certify the new truck, another, you know, process.
Okay, that's the problem I have with it was from part A to B.
I apologize for that misunderstanding, yeah. No, it's just pure mechanical.
Thank you, uh any further comments, questions?
I don't know if Justin's still on, if um or maybe Si you or or Cheryl may know what our balance is on the. L E T C F one.
It's up there.
Three hundred and ninety three thousand.
Three ninety three, thank you.
That's on the L L A T C F.
That's localist.
Yeah.
Local assistance to try to leave fund.
And and Commissioners and Chairman, if I may say one last thing, the vendor of the truck that we've kind of identified, we did a lot of homework to find. Uh one a vendor and a truck that would be available. This was uh this particular company is a worldwide corporation. Uh they're willing to work with both the county and the village when it comes to financing. So once they know that things are kind of underway and paperwork's being processed to actually get us this truck in hand while all that's working. Um so that's another part of the mix there.
I remember correctly from your email, this will be a gasoline truck, not a diesel or?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's a it's a gasoline truck.
How big a tank and tonnage?
Three thousand gallons is the size of the tank. Sir, I don't know the full tonnage on it.
Okay, now I just, let's.
The the nice thing about having the fuel truck is a C D O is not required, since it doesn't go off airport property.
Yeah, yeah, uh used to be in the fuel business, hence my question.
Mister. Thank you, uh Jeff, um Ben's his company is in Florida, and that if we had a warranty issue or or that to service the truck. Um how would that be supported locally?
It would be supported locally. They actually have uh Texas, California, Ohio, and Florida. It just happens to be that. Uh this this company actually has three trucks already ready to go on the lot. Uh but they would have, you know, arranged for service on it. It's a. Just be a standard. As far as the pump goes, you know, that would be one company, but as far as Ford, Chevy G M. It would just be a local dealer that would work on it. Thank you.
County Manager.
And I just want to remind you that this will have to go out for RFB. An RFB will have to be issued, so this may not be the company that is selected.
Correct.
But um I believe that village manager, we're offered to use his uh CPO to issue the RFB.
Yep, that is correct, yeah. They it will have, we understand that it will, and there that's part of the timing of it, so, yeah.
Any further?
Yeah, um. As far as procurement, have have we looked, is there anybody on um state contract or? Through the, I forget the name now, the other source one that we recently, yeah, um we could possibly look there. To avoid procurement.
Source ones.
And still be compliant. Yeah, and can be processed because of the length that it takes.
Right. First of all, what my initial push was to go to to Valcon. Uh City Services, who's our fuel vendor, and look, and unfortunately, they came up with a twenty year old truck. That we have this available uh to you. So in in doing the homework, yeah, it certainly, it's gotta go out for RFP. We look for those. Folks we already have relationships with, but the problem is they don't have the truck. It just so happens the company that we found uh builds these trucks and ships them worldwide, so they always have them ready to go on stock. Like, they have to. Eight pieces off the truck to provide it if we end up with a contract with them. That's how ready they are to ship.
Good, motion?
I have a quick question too. So this is just if we move, oh, my motion would be to. To approve half the purchase, but first talking with. And being, you know, NMDOT, and then after that, as long as the LATCF funding will meet this requirement. We could move forward with it, but the titling of the vehicle, the ownership of the vehicle, I'd like it to be remain in the county.
Absolutely. And then it it does absolutely, uh Commissioner Trujillo, it would be county property. That would be a part of the assessment when we do the final transfer. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I guess that would be my motion.
No, I don't have any questions.
All right.
I don't know that the state will fund it now that we say we are already gonna fund it if they don't, so, but. That's why I held my cards, but anyway, I I support moving forward.
So motion to approve with the buy of DOT or ALA TCF. Coming through and Angel Fire picking up fifty percent of the cost, not exceeding a hundred and fifty thousand on our part. Roll call.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Uh, is it your gentleman?
Yo, yes. Mister Chavez, do you mind uh coming up and introducing yourself and saying hello to the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I appreciate the interruption for your uh the good business for the folks of Colfax County for to allow me an opportunity to speak. Uh my name is Santiago Chavez. I'm the new uh executive director of the North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, which basically functions as the COG or the Council of Government. For this region. Um I just wanted to take the opportunity to come and um. Speak to one of my board members, Mister uh Commissioner Trujillo, but also just uh to the commission as a whole, and. While I'm here for the Ratoan Economic Development uh Conference, I just uh thought it'd be a great opportunity to speak to you all. Um I talked a little bit about myself. I'm from uh rural New Mexico. I grew up in a small town at the foot of the Monzano Mountains called Torreon, New Mexico. I went to Estancia High School. I proudly served in the eighty second airborne, um disabled veteran who has bad knees from jumping out of airplanes. I used the GI Bill and uh went uh got my degree in finance and a master's degree in business and another one in accounting. I've had a long career in supporting. Local government. I spent uh obviously municipal finance director and a municipal uh town manager. Obviously municipal finance director and a municipal uh, town manager. And I spent about eight years working at the Association of Counties. And during that time, I spent quite a bit of time working here in. Uh, Colfax County. I've worked with the former clerk, former treasurer, former assessor and several of the commissioners over the years and former. Uh, county managers, including one that sits as your commissioner as well. Uh, so uh, Colfax County has always had a. A dear place in my heart and, and it's a sincere pleasure to be here with you all. Um, I also spent uh, some time at the city of Albuquerque. I was the mayor's chief of staff for about a year. And for the last five years, I worked at taxation and revenue, um, where I worked uh, as the director of property tax. And in that time, I was also able to serve Colfax County because we were in charge of property tax auctions and, and that sort, so. Uh, it's just been a real passion of mine to serve uh, local governments and especially in northern New Mexico. Uh, the last two years before I took this position, I was the director of auditing compliance, so. Not just property tax, but uh, audit and compliance of all tax programs in. In the state of New Mexico. So I have a considerable amount of experience working with finances and taxes and um. But also have a passion in serving uh, northern New Mexico. So uh, just. When Commissioner Trujillo gave me the opportunity to come up and visit, I just thought I would take that opportunity. Um. So that's just a little bit about me. Uh, North Central. Does provide a lot of technical services to uh, the counties and the communities within our district. Um. I've been on the job about seven weeks now. Um, had to. Uh, fill some critical positions, including our outgoing. Triple A Director, which is the area, non-metro area agency on aging, which is Neil Sagata, which is. Familiar to you all, so I have to replace him as he's retiring. Uh, so working through uh, those issues and getting up to speed and, you know, having the opportunity to be here in. Uh, beautiful Ratoan, New Mexico, so um, that's, that's about all I wanted to say, Commissioner, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you for coming, Mr.
Hello, welcome back. Thank you. You as well.
And just for our, just for our constituents, uh, Santiago, Santiago is taking over and working from Monica Bata, the prior director. And North Central has a huge impact, not only on the state, but here locally. So all your senior centers, when he says non-metro triple A, they oversee the senior centers. So re, you know, those in Eagle Nest, Springer, Simroon, Angel Fire, all those senior centers are overseen by North Central. So that gives us a voice, Colfax County within the, the seniors. They're also working on the Rock Program, uh, which is working on our affordable housing issues, which is the main location is here in Ratoan. And also the workforce integration uh, network, which is helping youth go into the skills trades. So those are just a few of the comments I wanted to add in there to explain what North Central was.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Santiago. I appreciate you coming.
All right, appreciate you all.
Yay, line item twelve, discussion, the Wild Divide Biannual Report.
Good morning, Commission. I am Patricia Duran, the Executive Director for the Center for Community Innovation. And then this is Putaria Martinez. Who is our marketing assistant managing the Wild Divide contract with Rogers Tax. So I will let her. Um, give a discussion of the last six months and what we've been able to achieve, as well as a full. Report of the last year for our analytics for um, the Wild Divide.
Alrighty, good morning. So um, for our social media, we had um, a total reach of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine people on Facebook. Seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four on Instagram, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty on TikTok. Five hundred and sixty-six on X or Twitter. And two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight on threads, bringing that to a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven people. Which is actually fifty-eight percent greater than the last six-month report that we had given. Um, for our website, we had one thousand and fourteen site sessions with eight hundred and twenty-five unique visitors. And all of that is primarily coming from New Mexico, Colorado, Arizona and Texas. Um, mostly from Albuquerque, Phoenix, Denver and the Dallas and Fort Worth area. Um, so in total, from the beginning of March twenty twenty-five to the end of September twenty twenty-five. We reached a hundred and twenty-nine thousand people. And since the launch of the Wild Divide in October twenty twenty-four, we reached a total of two hundred and five thousand, five hundred people. Which is like well within our goal of reaching two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand people within the first year.
Yeah, and that's all I have. Um, I just want to say, um, all of this reach on social media is all organic. It is not paid for. Um, I have been working in marketing and advertising for about twelve, thirteen years. And so for us to start a pilot project like this and get those types of numbers, it's almost unheard of. Um, especially in a rural area. So um, I also want to comment that uh, the middle of October, I went down to Alamo Gordo for our Main Street Institute. And met with, you know, some of our local Main Street directors and they're hearing about, they're seeing the Wild Divide. You know, we got comments from people in Alamo Gordo, Carlsbad, as well as Clovis and um, Taos who are, you know, seeing what we're doing. Hey, how did you get this started? What kind of partnerships have you, just kind of letting them know, you know, what we did over here. And so. They're seeing the reward and they're seeing what we're building. And it's in, you know, they're seeing it. And a lot of them too have grown up. A few of the people that I met with have grown up here in Colfax County and they're like, hey, it's so great that we're seeing. All of the beauty that Colfax County has to offer as far as outdoor recreation and tourism and events. Um, before, you know, there was really nothing as far as, I mean, there's little things, but to have. A solid brand that promotes our county and promotes tourism, promotes just anything. Gets us on the map, shows us that we're working towards something in the county. It shows us that we're working something great for New Mexico in, in general. So just to hear those comments was really rewarding, especially as someone who's like, we're just gonna throw a dart at the map and see where it lands. And to see that it's actually, you know, paying off is great, so.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Something, I think the numbers are pretty impressive. I would like to see the visits to the website up.
Yeah.
Um, that, you know, I, I, I've seen some of your advertising, you know, specific events or locations or that. But I think, you know, to, from a county standpoint and stuff with continued support, I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
Tie back in. How you do that, you're the marketer online.
Yeah, I'm actually really excited because, you know, since this last year when you, we approved the county and the city to come together for the New Mexico True Grant. We saw really big returns on our website for New Mexico True, you know, getting all the digital access. So um, this last month, we actually met with. New Mexico True, they came down, filmed a lot of the areas in Colfax County. And so the plan is with that digital campaign that we, and y'all um, paid for. Um, that ad will start, I believe, in March, April-ish. And so when we had that for Exploratone. We got twenty thousand people on our website every month for three months, and that was amazing. So that's twenty thousand people. But that doesn't include the three million people that were reached, you know, that didn't actually click on the website. So to see, I'm ex- I'm excited to have those numbers for you. Obviously it won't happen till March, but it'll be really exciting. And, you know, since our partnership with New Mexico True for the city. Um, we've seen a lot more people, you know, click organically or just type in Exploratone into their search browsers because. They have that kind of reach and they reach those demographics that are more likely to, instead of clicking on an ad, they're like, oh, I know Exploratone dot com. I know the Wild Divide dot com. So I'm excited for that. Um, and like, you know, just like you said, this has all been organic. So we're gonna have some paid advertising this next year. And so I'm really hopeful that this will pay off really well.
Thank you.
Mr. Trujillo?
Uh, no, I, I like the numbers. I'm glad it's, it's increasing. I do see what, you know, what Commissioner Kern was stating, and I do see a. You know, a decent sized increase over the last six months on the website. Um, have you done any advertising for hunting and fishing? Yes, or the gravel grinder?
Yeah, um, I think one of our biggest clicks that we get is we um, got one in Mexico Game and Fish and then we reshared. Their hunting guide that they had, I sent, I think they sent it through like an email. And we published that. And so the majority of our clicks are coming from that. Actually, it's pretty interesting. So it's like, you know, what to do, when not to do, where to fish, how to get your permits, things like that. Um, so that's, I think that's our top. Honestly, our top page.
Okay, great. No, I, I just think about, thinking of our constituents and then morsel on the unincorporated part. You know, a large source besides ranching is hunting, fishing. Uh, one of the largest contributors to Rogers Tax for Mayo.
Yeah.
Hunting, fishing. Uh, and then the gravel grinder, have you been able to, to glass that out at all, or I don't?
I, I haven't had a meeting with them recently, but I know that they have been continually promoting it on social media. Um, we also. Had worked with the city to get a billboard up at Capulan that kind of just promoted that. That's um, the gravel grind, or gravel guide between all of us, Angel Fire. Um, and so I, it's going pretty well. I actually, I think at the last Rogers tax, or two, two months ago, Myra had mentioned. That um, Gus Holm from Vermejo was just, happened to be traveling down the highway from Simroon. And he saw a bike, like a couple of bikers with the actual guide, just kind of stopped at the three-mile bridge. So. It's getting out there, people are utilizing it. And so that, that's all I've known so far. But I do need to have a follow-up meeting with um, Juan and um. Yes, I can't remember, Stephen.
Yeah, and then I, thank you. I, I think you have been helping Michael do the, the new boards that were placing. Down on I forty and down near Carlsbad, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Manager? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Line item thirteen, discussion action, claim of exemption number seventy-seven, excuse me. Rodney Reed.
Morning Commissioners. Today we are requesting the approval for claim exemption number seven for Ronnie Reed. Um, this exemption meets all requirements and has been approved and reviewed by a county attorney. Also, Mr. Reed is online via Zoom for any questions.
Commissioner Kern?
I d- I'm not sure that it does meet all the requirements. Um. And I may defer to the clerk because I know she spoke with judge, with the uh, probate judge directly. And um, so uh, if you don't mind, Sarah, could you uh, update us on what, what you found?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So as I was looking at the claim of exemption um, earlier. Um, I noticed there is a probate in there from Texas. Um, so um, me and my chief deputy, Rieta, went down to see Judge Quint on this. Um, because we know since we deal with probates. Um, that one should actually be filed here in New Mexico. Um. We talked to Judge Quint and he confirmed that with us. Uh, that we need proof of authority to be filed here in New Mexico.
Thank you. Trujillo, manager?
Well, I, I think seeing that, that we're lacking that piece of information and stuff, I would propose that we table this until. All doc, the remainder of the documentation is received.
I, I have no comment. I, I defer to Commissioner Kern. She has a better experience of reviewing these than I do, so. And I'll go with uh, over the board or council sees fit on this.
Okay, up. Second motion to table. Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes. Line item fourteen, uh, discussion action resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash seven-five. A resolution authorizing and approving submission of completed application for financial assistance. And project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority.
Mouthful.
That's a lot of reading.
Good morning. So I did submit a letter um, via email um, to the commissioners, asking you guys to just um, reconsider. Uh, so with that said, I'll stand for questions.
Vice Chair?
Um, so this is basically reconsidering the purchasing of the. What was the Hester's building, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Where do I begin? Um. I totally support in, in the fact that we need to get our trucks in a heated space. Um, they're not doing us any good sitting outside without water in them. Um, they need to be ready to roll. Um. So I would support. Funding for a heated barn to put those in, but I, I don't support. The purchase of the, the Hester's building. I think um, I don't. It's um, it's not big enough. It's not tall enough. Um, I don't think we can fit the, our Class A's in there. Without major uh. Remodels. And um, I hate to see, as Commissioner Trujillo brought up before, I hate to see taking that. Building out of economic potential in the, in the community. Um. So if you came in with a application to build a. Um, barn, a heated barn to put. Uh, rigs in, I would support that. Um, I don't think we need the extra office space. We have plenty of office space here. And I don't think we need meeting rooms because we have plenty of those already, so. That's my two cents worth.
Thank you. Commissioner Trujillo?
Uh, Nate, thank you for bringing it up and thank you for your email. I do see your, your points and how this would be potentially a cost savings. Um, and sometimes what is, is, I, I, I don't support going after the Hester building though. But I, I, you know, sometimes what's good for the county is not best for the people. Um, and the way I see that as. Is it, is taking a, a prime real estate off, uh, well, one, off the taxable. Two, the city of Ratoan, you know, that's a G R T producing asset and we, we need economic development here. And uh, hopefully that building can be filled with a business that could drive G R T and, and drive some kind of economic growth here. Um, I couldn't tell you if, if the trucks would fit or not. I'm not that, not that smart, but uh. You know, I, I, I do defer to my other two commissioners and I would support if you wanted to, to build a. Uh, a heated barn or, or however you see fit, so.
So this was in lieu of building a new admin building out at the rodeo grounds. Um, that, the cost of that was like, you know, a little over two million. Um, I could still pursue that. That's, you know, store has the front property and everything. For the same mission that I was trying to accomplish, it was just a, an opportunity that came up. Um, and I felt that it was a low-cost opportunity, um, even for, like she mentioned with the bay doors. Um, two bay doors would need to be added. Um, I come from the background of construction and know what it would entail. Um, not a very uh, high cost to do that. Um, but like I said, I just came over here to see if you guys would reconsider. Um, if not, I always support your guys' decisions. I know you guys are looking out for the best interest of the county, so. Um, hence the reason I brought forth one more time, just to make sure.
But, and I appreciate you being out there looking. So I, I appreciate the, the ingenuity and, and drive for that, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I will agree. Um. I don't like the fact that the trucks are sitting outside that really. Heat at me. But I think more than a big show building. We need a building that'll handle Class A's or double stack wildland, heated, ready to roll. Uh, we have offices, we have meeting rooms in here that are at fire's disposal. Uh, I do not see spending money for meeting rooms and offices. But I would dearly and wholeheartedly support. Uh, building for storage of the trucks and extra equipment. And being able to roll out instantly. Uh. The pure fact that bothered me the most was the trucks parked outside.
Absolutely.
And we have to fuel up and fill up and. so, but yeah, I would strongly support building, a building for the trucks and equipment.
And just uh, one thing to point out, I would need to maintain an office in whichever building. If I decide, if we go forward with the building out there, it does include a couple of offices. That is for the um, purposes of my state fire funds with that extra office that I, you know, maintain fire department related stuff. Um, my funding would also double. So just keeping some of that in mind, um, moving forward from there. Um, on purchasing or building brand new, um, that's the consideration for the offices. Really doesn't have anything to, to do with me personally needing another office. Um, but that does go entail with state fire funds and the requirements for us building um, a building using state fire funds.
Anything further?
No, I would, like I said, I, I would totally support moving forward with that.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion.
No action.
The motion fails. Line item fifteen, discussion action approval of Colfax County Yes Program Home Visitor Contract for Victoria Gonzalez.
Commissioners, this is the final hire for the Yes Department. Um, she, the effective start date is November ten and salary will be prorated. I know that it's listed a certain amount on the contract, but it will be promoted, prorated through uh, June thirtieth.
Okay, thank you, manager. Uh, Commissioners, questions?
I always have questions.
Do what, sir?
Said I always have questions, but Commissioner Kurt.
Right. I just assume that all of the backgrounds and all of that have been done, past all of that. Okay, thank you.
So is this a, a new position? Cause I know we hired the two plus the director. And then, so this is a new position that's.
Uh, according to uh, Danielle in Human Resources, the commission approved an additional position for the budget because they're about, their grant funding is approximately four hundred thousand. I, I was not here when that happened, but.
No, and that was my question. As long as it's within their budget, I'm fine with that. I know my time as acting county manager, they were, had a level of needing to get one more to meet their service demand. So.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to clarify, did someone leave or is this a new position? It's a new position.
New position.
Thank you.
And it's all funded by the grant.
Correct. It is one hundred percent funded by the grant.
Uh, thank you, manager. Uh, motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Treheal.
Yes.
Yes. Line item sixteen, discussion action approval of Colfax County and Ciete Inc. Construction Agreement for RFB twenty twenty five dash O one Blosser Gap Bridge Replacement.
Good morning, uh, Chairman Commissioners. Uh, this is the actual signing of, for the approval of the signing of the agreement between the Colfax County and Ciete Inc., which is the uh, awarded contractor on the Blosser Gap Bridge Replacement. We have received all the bonds and insurance and gone through those and uh, I will be bringing those documents up to the county tomorrow afternoon. Um, so this is just the final step. Uh, having uh, allowing the uh, Commission Chairman to sign the agreements uh, with Ciete.
Questions, discussion?
I, yes, I do. Um, I did want to update the commission. So I did reach out over the weekend to NMDOT. I finally got the, the final numbers from Mike Provine. And I know prior we said it was three hundred to five hundred thousand. And Mike, your, your final number, what was it? Six hundred and five or something?
Uh, just over six hundred thousand, six hundred and three or something in that range. Yes, sir.
Well, let's get exact. Uh, because it does not include any contingencies and everything else. I just think it's pertinent to be in the, the minutes and for the commission to know what our funding gap is. Uh, if we're approving this, we're probably also most likely approving the overages. So we're on the spreadsheet that I received, the six hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty nine dollars and fifteen cents. And that, uh, does that include the county's five percent match or not?
Uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, that, that does not, that include, that is um, total money. So uh, in the previous grant, um, the county was responsible for, I believe, five percent of that portion. So if that carries through the same, uh, you would have five percent of the six hundred and two thousand would be from this, the county. Uh, hopefully the, the remaining money would come from such as the DOT.
So that, that total then is six hundred and thirty four thousand, one hundred fifty seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And then I did reach out, like I said, I reached out to NMDOT and Secretary Serna. Um, I will continue to to reach out. So.
I might, I might add, uh, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, um, while you have a word at the project, um, there is some time to sign the agreements. Uh, so if this uh, if it's the commission's uh, desire to hold offense, signing that, executing those agreements, that, that, that's uh, in your, uh, in your court, uh, the emotion could be made. Uh, I'm not sure how it's written in the agenda, but a motion could be made to uh, allow the county commission chairman to execute the documents once the funding um, is um, allocated. I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
I'd rather just continue as we did before, you know, we'll continue to try to get funding. Uh, cause I don't want to wait any longer. I mean, we just keep pushing along, pushing along. And then I don't know what the, the reverting of these funds are. And I do know we have a, uh, forget the term, like kind of a lease, but not, it's not a lease with West Mac and the Moore Ranch and it's it's what, May?
I guess I believe it's May and the uh, existing grant expires uh, June thirtieth of twenty six, I believe.
And that's to also remove the low water crossing. That, is that included in this bit?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kern, any follow up?
No, I think we need to go ahead and push forward.
Manager.
I did speak to the road superintendent and he thinks that this is the best time of year to get the work done because of the water flow. Um, so time is of the essence. The sooner we can get the contract approved, the better.
Thank you. Motion.
Don't want to be working on it in May.
No.
Um, I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Treheal.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item seventeen, discussion action, New Mexico Department of Transportation Fence Cooperative Request Agreement. Highway five 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 at La Mesa Airport.
Chairman Commissioners, this item was brought back or was brought for discussion and was worked on by Commissioner Treheal when he was acting county manager. I believe he reached out to John Herrera with NMDOT to find out about the fence cooperative. This particular grant, uh, the state will pay for the fencing material and the gates. And then the county would be responsible for the labor. And I'm going to defer to Commissioner Treheal to discuss further.
Commissioners, this is just something that I, I'd like to go forward with. Um, I'd like to probably use the non-promash, non-promotional lodgers tax funding for this. Um, I'm thinking roughly, I got a, I got one quote back when I was acting county manager and it was for roughly six thousand uh, to run that, run the fence along five 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 for the old La Mesa Airfield. There's a couple of concerns and then one is, you know, one is that if NMDOT is going to pay for the material and gates, it'd be nice to replace the gates at the main part and to put a gate up top where the city of, or the, where they balloon rally, a lot of them enter and park, they just cut the fence and they roll it all the time. Um, it'd be nice to have something more just, just standard and looking better. Um, but with that, on how it's open now, um, it does present liabilities. I mean, I see people that go in there and pull in to the hangar. We have people that will pull their RVs and go back in there and actually live and stay. Um, so those are, those are just some of the issues why I do want to get the fence redone. And uh, this is just something that I've been wanting for a while, but wanted to bring it up and get your opinions.
Commissioner Kern.
Well, I was wondering who did, who cut the fence and everything over there. Um, I, I think a lot of that could be fixed and just pulled up. I've, I think the V mesh fire would, is lot more containing than a five wire barbed wire would be. Um, I think we could just do some work and put some gates in now. Um, if you're gonna do a gate any place except where the existing one is, it's going to have to be permitted by the DOT and everything to um, for a turnoff coming off of that. Um, so I wouldn't put any additional ones. I would just use the existing one that's there. Um, and if we I, I don't know. I, I I don't think a five wire barbed wire is going to contain anybody. If they want to go in there, they're going to, it's easier to cut five wires than it is to cut the V mesh, but and it, it is somewhat unsightly in that, but I do think it could just, could be fixed and.
And I'm fine with, with that. If we could move to, to I guess if we would, I don't know if we could get maintenance to do it or a contractor to do it.
Yeah, what? I'm sorry.
If we would, if we were to get it fixed, is this something maintenance can handle or is this something we would get?
No.
A contractor to complete it.
And be a contractor. Uh, I'll be honest, I hadn't looked at it till this morning. I left early and that beam ash fire is something else. Uh, it's a pain in the butt to stretch and everything else, but it's a real pain to try to go through. And it looks like the majority of it to me is good. But it does need some more posts, needs to be pulled back up and stretched and proper gating put in on the entrance. Uh, the gates are there, they're just thrown back. Uh, and if someone's going to use the property and they cut the fence, they also need to be liable for the damages to county property while it's in use. Uh, I think I would, at current, like to see an estimate on repairing and what's there and replacing the existing gate. Uh, more gates you have, more control you lose. So I'm not sure about secondary gate, um, just from that's personal experience. Motion.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see it. Uh, let's, let's get an idea on what it would cost to repair it and, and put in, you know, maybe the couple of corners there and hang some better gates and, and could maybe even put bigger ones so that would be um, easier for, for when we do host the, the balloon rally. Also, um, keep in mind that we do have an agreement with, um, Luna Community College that they do their uh, CDL testing on that site as well.
Didn't realize that. I put some posted signs on it too, kind of slow things down.
Was that a motion?
Sure. You want me to put? I make a motion that we look at repairing and getting an estimate on repairing and putting new gates.
Well, second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Treheal.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Hear me out on that.
Yep. Line item eighteen, discussion action, what? Discussion Action Resolution Number Twenty twenty five dash nine one. A resolution defining public safety employees and establishing a fourteen day work period for law enforcement and detention officer.
Commissioners, uh, this comes before you, uh, in order to clarify, when, once we've moved to the fourteen day work week, uh, or work period. Um, there is a provision in the Fair Label Standards Act, known as section two oh seven K that establishes the overtime eligibility for um, law enforcement and public safety employees, which would also include uh, fire emergency services as well as detention. Um, if you look at the, at the previously adopted policy of the county, uh, it I, I think you should probably reasonably infer that it applies uh, with regard to all of those, but it was not specific as to, as to the applicability of VMDC. You had to infer that. This makes it, this makes it um, crystal clear in terms of what that is. So the overtime eligibility for uh, not exempt public safety employees is uh, eighty six dollars. I'm, I'm sorry, eighty six hours in a, in a fourteen day work period. Um, this also restates our existing overtime policy uh, with regard to the Fair, Fair Label Standards Act, that uh, for uh, all other not exempt employees, it's eighty hours in a fourteen day work period and that exempt employees are not entitled to uh, overtime compensation. And it also provides the rate, which is unchanged from previous, which is one point five times the employee's regular hourly rate. And um, if you're a salaried, not exempt employee, then we, uh, then we divide that by twenty eighty uh, in order to get that, that hourly rate and it's only actual hours. Uh, so we don't include holiday vacation, sick agreement, military or other leave, uh, which again is, is simply a restatement of the, of the existing policy. Uh, and this would go into effect with the very next pay grade.
Thank you. Commissioners.
No questions.
Commissioner Treheal.
Uh, just one, I understand why we're doing this and everything else, but will it have any effect on potential morale between the jail and the the jail staff and sheriff staff? Like, is there gonna, their overtime going to change at all or?
So the, certainly, uh, the, the sheriff staff is currently been under this. The uh, VMDC uh, should have been under this. And so this is going to clarify that they're, that they're squarely under this, which will actually help us to stay within budget. Part of the issue within VMDC, which is distinct from every other department within the county is that they run twelve hour shifts. And so running twelve hour shifts, then we either uh, have people at thirty six hours uh, in a week, in which case we don't have sufficient workforce. Or we have them uh, at, at about forty eight hours uh, in a week, in which case they, they would still get some um, overtime, un- unless you, you in a fortune day period have a thirty six and a, and a forty eight. And so, but it makes clear what those limitations are uh, within the regular work week of what's expected of a law enforcement person and when you actually get the overtime.
So essentially, anything over forty right now, the jail is getting overtime, but it's going to switch to forty eight?
Uh, it's going to uh, switch to forty six. I'm sorry, eighty six. Uh, thank you. Yeah, forty three, forty three. It'll, it'll switch to eighty six in a, in a fourteen day period.
But to be clear, if they work forty three hours in a week, it's not overtime until they reach eighty six. So.
In a, in a two week period. Which is, which is the other thing, by the way, that was a little bit unclear. Which is, which is the other thing, by the way, that was a little bit unclear under the last policy, is whether we're looking at it week by week. Or now that we've gone to bi-weekly pay periods, if we're looking at it for the whole pay period. This makes it for the whole pay period, which makes it more fair.
You have any comment, Warden? Are you good? Alright, motion?
I, I move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Truque.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item nineteen, discussion action letter asking the administrative office of the. Courts matching funds to assist with funding and replacing the lighting in the clerk lobby. Atrium and lobby hallway with L E D lights at Leon. Gerolitz Justice Center.
Morning Chairman Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, so I reached back out to, um. Cam with the administrative office of the course to see if they had any funding left from when they did the fifty fifty. Match on our last project, uh, there were some projects that were not completed by other. Courts in the district, so they had funding available. This was part of the original. Ask, but we didn't know, they didn't know if they were gonna have the funding to cover it. They do now, which is why I brought this forward to commission. Uh, and sent it to county manager and we discussed it.
Thank you. Commissioners?
I would support the app, the, the ask. Um, simply because I know when we had the, the leaks and everything, there was water coming into a lot of those fixtures, so that I know there's corrosion. And uh, they need to be replaced, so I support.
Uh, I, I support it too. I was just wanting to know where the, like, our, our matches of. Where is our match coming from, the money? Is it coming from general fund or is it?
Well.
Can L A T C F or?
One of those, yeah, whatever, whatever ones available, yes. And we don't have to move.
Or is it L A T C F? Is it the, is it the sheriff's money he gets or is it the L A? I don't know, I'm just asking.
So the previous. The previous contracted work did come out of the general fund. Uh, this could come out of the L A T C F because it is infrastructure improvement.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with these, isn't it?
Motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second, roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Truque.
Yes.
Chairman Tatum.
Yes. Line item twenty, managers docket.
Thank you, Sean.
Chairman Commissioners. Uh, after our previous visit to the detention center, there were several items that were brought forward for repair. At the detention center. Uh, one item was the broken glass that has been since repaired. The weather strip has been added to the back door and the gate has been pre-repaired. Uh, Pooch's garage door service worked on that this past week. Currently, the maintenance supervisor is working with Benny's or Lil Benny's locksmith to. ascertain what can be done on the detention center locks. We should know a little bit more information next week if he can or cannot work with them. There are twenty uh, toilets that do need to be repaired or. Replaced to match the new system and approximately to fix each toilet. It's ten to twelve thousand dollars a piece. I would like to ask the commission if they want me to have. Perhaps five per year repaired or what to do moving forward with that, but I just wanted to let you know what it costs to repair or to replace. We have received three applicants for the assistant county manager position. I plan on having tested and possibly interviewed next week. Um, Audrey with JAG has agreed to participate on the interview panel. Um, we do have a job fair scheduled tomorrow from twelve to five at the convention center. And Warden Slade has agreed to represent the county with open positions and applications. Um, at this, at the job fair. And finally, oh, well, we did have an auction on Saturday. I believe, or according to J and J auto or auction, all items were. Um, auctioned, so we got rid of, I think, eight to ten um, vehicles. And then finally, I wanted to let the commission know that I will be at a manager's retreat in Santa Fe. On Wednesday, November fifth, returning Friday, November seventh. And that's all I have.
Uh, I brought this up way before you got here. And I've been meaning to call, but at one point I had asked for a list. For like primary jobs such as yours, uh, accounting, that. Do you have a more stringent, uh, bigger advertising? And from my answer the other day. The office, I don't think that was done, but I would like you to create what you think is applicable. For such positions. And you know, how wide should we advertise?
So tomorrow we are meeting with Monica Abeta and she is asking where we advertise. So when we do meet with her, um, I'm sorry, what is her position?
Uh, she's working now with North Central, hard time to work with wind program, so it's a workforce fit, uh, integration.
So hopefully she can give us guidance on advertising. I do know that if you advertise with Albuquerque Journal, you're gonna pay two hundred and fifty dollars for. A few sentences. So, um, and I'm also with Indeed from, or. Services like Indeed or can't remember the other one. You get way too much to filter through. Um, too many applicants come in and they're. It's, I just know from previous experience, it's just too broad, I wouldn't use services like that. But again, we will speak with Ms. Abeta tomorrow and find out if she has more uh, resources.
I knew you had experience with that, that's why I'm picking on you, but thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Alright, Commissioner, any further for the manager?
I don't have any questions. Thanks, Harry.
Uh, Commissioner Docket.
But the only thing in that, the calls that I've been receiving are still related to the roads. Sorry, Heidi. You know, some people have commented, you know, thank you for, for finally getting to the road and everything, but there's still many roads that have not been attended to. Um, and a lot of the bigger rocks in that are starting to, to come. Up because of the uh, wear and tear. Also, a tremendous amount of complaints about the bar ditches being overgrown. Uh, because of the wet summer that we had, um, the sunflowers are eight foot tall and, and elm trees grew probably six feet. This summer, so um, a lot of, a lot of complaints there because. Um, I've noticed people that uh, have hit wildlife because they just don't even see them and then they pop out. So I know the crew is out there trying to get things done, but um, you know. Uh, but when you're behind, you're behind, but uh. I hope they don't give up and just keep after it because there's a lot of that that needs to be done and. The bar ditches are gonna need to be knocked down because if we get a snowstorm anytime soon. And it blows the least little bit, these roads are gonna blow in something horrible. So, uh, if they can get on that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Commissioner Truue?
Al Rato Media Works is gonna be having a groundbreaking tonight at the old Kearney School. So anyone interested in going there, I think they're gonna have some food and probably a tour of the building, et cetera. Uh, the city of Raton also has their uh, economic development, something going on today. And tomorrow it's open to the public at the convention center. I attended our North Central Economic Development District Meeting in Santa Fe. Um, you know, they, they talked about the rock program with our house here in, in Raton and it's coming along, it's, it's in the final phases. Uh, the win, the win program and they talked about how the data centers are, are coming along and it's uh. It's ungodly. They uh, they cannot find enough workers within the trades to meet. Even a part of the demand, so they have uh. You know, the huge multi-billion dollar data center going down the southern part of the state and then additional one down there, one in the central. And then one in the northern, uh, that's coming up, so we're working to try to get new Mexicans in those jobs. Trained. Um, they also talked about the senior centers, their current director Neil Sagata is retiring December first. They have a new director in place now, uh, working along to have a smooth transition. Uh, one of the concerns that they brought up with the senior centers. Is the cost per meals anymore. It's coming in about ten dollars per, per meal that they're making. So at that point, it's, it's getting almost to a point where it's un-economical. Um, they've had some other. Other counties or other centers go in there and actually contract the workout. And they save money that way, but they lose the employees and that's where their savings is kinda coming from, so it's a, a win-win or win-lose. Uh, but it's figure, it's something that I, I wanted to take a look at and I'll track and, and let the commission know as far as that goes. Um, I, Mike, thank you for this Mols and Corbin uh, project sheet. And if you do have it or if the county manager has it, would you please send it to me via email? So I'll put it on my tracker and, and bug the heck out of you guys. And then uh, something, you know, with, with Mary Lou brought up a good point with winter right around the, the corner. Uh, I don't know if there's an interest on the commission to have the county manager do like a request for emergency services. Like, remember how we got that huge snowstorm last year and uh. I don't even know if there's people out there that are companies that'd be willing to do it, but set a bidding. You know, really, we could go out and they, they say if there's a snowstorm within this certain area. We'll call, uh, we'll potentially call on you up to this dollar amount to go help us clear the roads. You know, because the, the county roads department already has their priorities. It's gonna be the school bus routes uh, first and then. You know, probably metal routes and then opening up roads just for people to get out. But even with that, we saw this last year, it took almost a. A week or two to actually get some of those road open and get cattle fed. And uh, the state was of no help to us. They said they would help us financially, but when it came down to it. We didn't qualify, so we're always gonna be on our own, in my opinion. And I just rather us be a little bit more prepared if a big winter storm comes. But I'll leave it to the commission with our opinion and Tom.
I just wanna say, uh, Tom Viall, emergency management, um, in regards to your comments, when we looked into that last year. The issue is the availability of contractors. There's, there really just isn't anyone regionally that was available. Um, certainly not on short notice. And then the few small time ones that potentially would be available. We're going with the higher dollar amount from private individuals looking to clear ranches, et cetera. And so, um. We, we can, again, we can approach that, um, since I worked on that last year, but it's just really not there.
Thank you, Thomas.
You're done for you guys.
Basically roads, weeds, getting them kicked back. Uh, due to pending snow. And I would like to know what we can legally spray. On these elm trees and the bar ditches once that uh. You know, it'd be a lot easier to spray twenty miles in one day and kill the trees than spend weeks. With the crew having to cut them back again.
I know that um, um, they do, when they cut the trees, they do apply a poison to them. To, to stunt the growth and, and potentially kill them.
Yeah, I was looking for a follow-up for, because elms are notorious for sprouting.
Correct.
I mean, I hate the things, but uh, they are a nuisance and a continuous pest. I just wondered if there was some way that they follow up in two, three months after a heavy rain. Come through and spray them to keep them burned down, if that would be possible. I know there's limits on what can be sprayed, that is my question.
I will look into that and see.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And then my other one, at one point, uh, one of the vehicles that was being left to the maintenance. Was to maintenance was going to put a snow plow on it. To clear parking lots such, I wish I meant to call you, I apologize. I just wanted to know where we were at on that.
I believe the maintenance supervisor is um, getting quotes and I, it sounds like Topar in Trinidad will be the one installing. I just don't know when.
And that is all I have for now, uh. Commissioner Truue brought up a point that we can look into. That is all I have, um. There's nothing further. Motion to adjourn. So moved? Roll call.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Truue?
Yes.
Chairman Tatum?
Yes.